Okay, this is the meeting for the Mobile City Planning Commission for Thursday, March 18th, 2021. General procedures for this remote meeting are as follows. I will announce an application for items where no one from the public is attending via Zoom. Staff will give an overview, including any comments received from the public. If a member of the public will attend, staff will announce their attendance and admit them at this time. Once the parties have joined the meeting, if needed, I'll set the commission's rules regarding the number of speakers as well as speaking time. Each application is limited to a maximum of four speakers in support and four speakers in opposition, limited to five minutes each. I will then announce the beginning of the public hearing. The applicant will present their case and up to three additional speakers if applicable. For each speaker, at the end of their presentation, I will ask if there are any questions from any commission members. Once the commission concludes their questions of the speakers in support of an application, I'll call for all, for interested parties to speak. At the end of each speaker's presentation, I will again ask if there are any questions from commission members. The applicant will be given an opportunity to rebut in accordance with commission rules, two minutes. After the rebuttal, I will declare the public hearing closed and the commission will go into the deliberation session. After the commission has rendered a decision, applicant and concerned parties will leave the meeting or will be sent back to the waiting room by staff where they can disconnect. I will then call the next agenda item. Commission members and staff, please remember to keep your microphone on mute unless you're speaking to the meeting attendees. I'm gonna call Roe. I'm Liba Latham. Jennifer Denson.
Here.
Bart Blackwell.
Here.
Taylor Acheson.
Here.
Matt Anderson.
Here.
Nick Amberger.
Here.
Lon Henry.
Here.
Jay Stubbs. Did I miss anyone? All right, we have a quorum. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the agenda for today's meeting?
Some of it.
Second.
All in favor of adopting the agenda? Any opposed? We should have gone that way. All right, the agenda's adopted. We will start with 5805 U.S. Highway 90 West, Don Carlos, Inc. It is a planned unit development, but they've asked for an extension for one year, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I've admitted Steve Fisher into the meeting. He's available for questions.
Margaret, is this their first extension?
Yes, it is.
I don't think we have any questions.
Does, do any commissioner members have any questions for Mr. Fisher? All right, thank you, Mr. Fisher, for attending. Would you like to make any comments? Mr. Fisher, would you like to make any comments? All right, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Is there any, no one's here to speak in opposition to this, are there, Ms. Pappas?
That is correct.
All right. I will make the motion for the extension of one year.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, let's move on to number two, which is the blocks at Cypress Creek subdivision in Phase One, re-subdivision of lots 13 and 14. The staff has recommended tentative approval. Pappas is the proponent here.
We have no one signed up in opposition and received no comments in opposition. Roe, the applicant, is in agreement with staff recommendations and there's no one here to speak.
All righty. Thank you so much. Somebody want to make a motion?
A motion to approve subject to staff recommendations.
This one?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from the commissioners or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll move on to number three. I'm recused on number three, so Ms. Denson's gonna take over for me here.
Yes, number three is Ridgeline Drive East, Ridgeline Drive subdivision, the re-subdivision of Lot 1, and it is tentatively, the staff has recommended tentative approval. Ms. Pappas, are there any applicants?
Yes, I have to bring to the commission's attention an email you received from Frank Lot. I have also admitted into the meeting Brett Orell for the applicant. Brett, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so we were in agreement with, with all of staff's recommendations. There were several things that we did get a chance to review Mr. Lot's concerns in terms of the letter, and one thing we wanted to point out is, is we have asked for a reduced setback along Old Shell Road. We are, you know, to our understanding, not allowed to access that road, and as part of this application, we are agreeing not to do that further. We've submitted a variance application, which is noted in the staff recommendations, to obtain a reduction of that setback, and I guess that will come down to what they decided at that time. We, we have a two-lot subdivision, you know, basically facing Ridgeline Road East. We went through several iterations of that and we ended up widening the frontage there to roughly 85 feet. We, we want to point out that the, one of the objections was the consistency with the neighborhood. The block in which this is located, on the far western side, that is also a corridor to Old Shell Road, a very similar application was approved, which is actually much smaller. It's, it's a 60-foot lot in that same block. It was a much smaller overall lot as well. So, so that subdivision was approved and has, has been done in the same block, as well as across the street as well, has been a re-subdivision of a larger tract of land. So, we felt like that met the existing conditions and criteria. Staff may not have for this report, but for as part of the variance, the planned home that, that we submitted to show the need for a reduced setback along Old Shell Road pushes our driveway as far north as possible. So, we've done everything we can to reduce any impact to that, that existing corridor on Ridgeline Road East, and, and we're asking that it, that it be approved as submitted along with the planning's recommendations.
Mr. Orell, I would like to ask you a question. On the driveway for Lot 1B, is, you're saying it's not in the same place where the driveway currently is for this lot? It, it's moved further away from the intersection?
I don't know if I have the exact answer for that. What I can say is that the intention is to where the, where the, the lot line will exist, that the, the driveway itself would be located as close to that dividing property line as possible, to, to minimize impact.
I was wondering what the zoning is on the, on the property, residential?
The zoning is R1's family.
Stay, we're not changing that, we're just doing the subdivision.
That's correct.
Margaret, I'd like to just, this is just a general comment for Mr. Orell and his, and his client. You know, what's being posed here is very, very customary, you know, big lots with older, smaller houses on it, and now smaller lots with bigger houses, just more impervious area. So, I would ask him to work very closely with the permitting department to make sure that the drainage is designed carefully. I don't know off the top of my head if, if what they've got proposed will, will get them to requiring a 100-year, two-year release. A lot of that depends on exactly where they are in a floodplain or in a particular watershed, and the footprint of what they're trying to, to, to design. I do know that lot is sloping down Ridgeline North away from Old Shell Road, and so, they've gotta be, they've gotta be conscientious to try to make the drainage, you know, work with the built environment. So, I would ask him to look at that very carefully with the architect and engineer, whomever designs, who actually designs the actual site.
And yes, yes, we would, we, we would do that, and I would, would point out, the immediate owner to the west is, is the engineer that would be working on this, that's his personal property, so, and he has had no objection to, to the subdivision, so just to point that out as well.
A question for staff, on the Board of Adjustment, 10-foot setback request, if we were to approve the subdivision today, that would be subject to them getting that 10-foot setback, or if they're denied the setback, would they have a lot with a 25-foot setback from Old Shell that would then be, you know, very challenging to build on?
They can, if they, their variance is denied, the side street setback would be 20 feet. But if the very, the planning commission cannot alter the zoning ordinance required setback, that is strictly under the jurisdiction of the Board of Zoning Adjustment. All we are requiring in our recommendation is that the setback line along Old Shell must comply with whatever decision the board makes. Approval at 10 feet, or if it's denial, it would need to be 20 feet.
So regardless of what the Board of Adjustment says, after this meeting, if we were to approve it, there would be two lots there?
There would be, and, you know, a standard width lot is 60 feet, and that's the width upon which standard setbacks are based. This lot is 85 feet, 85 feet wide along Ridgeline, and then 95 feet at the rear. So, even if the board were to deny the setback, you would still have, you know, 65 feet from this, you know, from Old Shell Road, going back to 75 feet here, within which to place the wall and the home.
So, if the subdivision fits within all the existing regulations, I mean, on what grounds could we deny the subdivision if there's not neighborhood covenants restricting it?
Legally, I think the only reason you could deny this would be because of a safety traffic concern, and I'm not saying you should, I'm just saying that that's the, the legal reason here, if there is one, and it would be because of the, I think what Frank Lot mentioned in his letter, that this is the only red light leaving, leading out of Ridgeline subdivision or Ravine Woods, and would that curb cut there, is in close proximity to the traffic light, create a safety can, safety issue or safety concern? I know the, there is a driveway directly across this lot on the east side. How far it is from the, from Old Shell, I don't know. I would like Mary Beth to tell us what she thinks the length or the distance from Old Shell Road, the driveway for this new lot should be. Is it 70 feet, 60 feet, just so y'all can have some idea on the safety issue?
My recommendation would be, and I think it goes along with what the applicant has stated, would be to keep it as far north as practical on the property site. It should improve the condition. I know it's dividing the property into two, and the driveway that is existing for the one home is basically right on top of the stop bar. So, yes, this will improve the condition that's there. There could still be safety concerns if the resident that was wanting to enter the driveway turns off Old Shell onto Ridgeline and can't enter their driveway because the queue is backed up. That's possible, but if, with the driveway as far north as, as practical, someone should be able to safely turn off of Old Shell and, and queue behind him or her, and, and wait for that queue to clear for them to be able to get into their driveway.
Brett, what do you, this is Doug Anderson, what do you think? What are you thinking as far as distance from Old Shell for the driveway? And I know we're saying as north as possible, but are we talking about all the way to the property line?
Yeah, I would say within reason, within, within, you know, three to five feet, three feet of the property line is what we anticipate. You know, I, I, I know that we want to push it as far north as possible, and I believe Ms. Denson asked about the, and I had time to, while y'all were discussing, you know, the existing, I do see the existing drive is, is right at the entrance there. Obviously, that would not be utilized, and, and we will be improving that significantly, probably close to 60, 60-plus feet of, of change there. So, our intention would be to put it as far north as possible up to the property line without violating any type of, you know, property rights.
To what, to, to better add on to what Mr. Orell is saying, when it gets to the permitting process, when there is a driveway adjacent to the property line, we look for the radius return of the driveway to be within the footprint or, or the extension of the property line to the roadway. So, the closest you would see the driveway would be four feet from the property line, because that's the, the standard radius for a residential driveway.
So, we're, we're, go ahead, Liba, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, where's the driveway for Lot 1A? Where is that going to be? Is that gonna be onto Ridgeline Drive, the curve, or is it gonna be on Ridgeline Drive East?
I, I, I can say that I do not know the answer to that at this time. I believe there already is an existing, I'm trying to see if there's an existing access to the east. I don't think there is. I don't think that has, has been determined, but I believe any location of that would have to come back through Mary Beth and her team to make that determination.
Okay. Mr. Henry, did you have other questions?
No, I was just trying to get clarification on, on the zoning classification, so if it's R1 and we're staying R1, I'm, I'm good with it.
I have one more question about the fence along Old Shell. It'll be well away from the sidewalks, it's not gonna interfere with any of the sidewalks, it's not gonna be a visual hazard with that intersection or anything like that?
That would not be, sorry.
That's okay. Traffic engineering is, also gives comments on variance applications, so they will review the variance application and give comments for that regarding the proposed height of the wall, which is eight feet tall. They are proposed, it's not to be along the property line, so it would not, it would not encroach onto the sidewalk, but they are proposing it within 10 feet. Now, it would be set back 25 feet from Ridgeline Road East.
The wall ends up being a couple of feet into their property, just simply because when they build the footing, the footing has to be on their property, so the, the face that you see actually ends up being set back, you know, at, at least 12 inches, maybe, maybe 18 inches or more.
Mary Beth, what is your thoughts on concerning Jennifer's question on the curb cut for 1A? Are you thinking Ridgeline Drive or Ridgeline West?
My comment stands as though it's one per-street frontage for that lot. I try to be open-minded when it comes to some of these residential lots, because the, the desire for a circular driveway comes up. It would really need to be near either end of the property line on, on that lot, that curve coming into that intersection, it would be in the owner's best interest and to keep it as, as close to their property lines as well in that lot. But not knowing which way the house would be oriented, I want it to be flexible with the condition on the subdivision plaque.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments or questions? Is there any, would it, I guess I'm trying to figure out is if, whatever happens with the Board of Adjustment, whether it's approved or not, we really are taken out of the decision making. I mean, it's not gonna matter what the Board of Adjustment does, because they will change the setback in the front and whatnot, correct? I mean, we don't need to hold this over and wait for that decision-making.
Margaret, would they, could, I guess the commission could make their approval conditioned upon a variance, and that's not what the reports are suggesting, but that's a possibility if, if that's a concern of this condition.
I thought that was what staff had recommended.
Oh, I, I didn't think it was.
That, that's the way I thought.
Yeah. Retention of the 10-foot setback or whatever reduced setback is approved by the Board of Adjustment.
Oh, okay. I got you.
So, that, that is our intent. The board's decision will guide the setback along Old Shell Road. The reason why we do that or did that is because, you know, if the board approves it, and then you've got a different setback on the plaque, then the applicant has to come back and alter the setback on the plaque. So, that's the reason why we phrased it that way.
Margaret, knowing that there are several other properties along this section of the road, really just one not very far down, is that 10-foot setback kind of in keeping with what's been approved at those other locations? I'm just curious if we know, I know there, I think where Hillwood comes in, there's several houses that have that wall situation, and then I think somewhere in between Hillwood and maybe at the corner of Marston, and the, that next block, there's another house that's got a wall. I'm just curious if that's, you know, if there's a precedent that's already been set, that that's probably where they're gonna go or not.
Yeah, the, the last wall approved in that area was Dylston Old Shell Lot.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of. Is that, was, was that one a 10, a 10-foot?
You know, I can't, I, I don't recall. You've got a varying pattern. I mean, I can remember the, the house here, there's like a 10-foot wall here along Old Shell. Some of them are not variances, some of them are PUDs, such as Fielding Place and Place Levert, and their walls on the south side of Old Shell Road. You have a similar situation on the north side, just one lot removed from this intersection with Forside Square and Span Place. Then the, the facility here down at Marston, that was a PUD as well. That's been there for, back in the 90s, and I cannot recall, but I believe that's a 10-foot wall. So, some are by variance, some are by PUD.
And the one we approved at Dylston is, matches up with the Morissette wall, so if the Morissette wall is 10 feet, then, then that one would be too.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson, I believe you mean Marston, not Dylston.
I do, you're absolutely correct. Dylston's at my house, not up there.
Okay.
Hey Doug, this is a question for you, we've been through this before, but I'm trying to remember, Frank Lot's letter or email referenced precedent, you know, setting precedent for this type of subdivision in this area with a lot of large lots, and, you know, they seemed, he seemed to think that something like this being approved in this neighborhood would kind of be a chain reaction. Are, are we bound by precedent, or what are your thoughts on, on that?
Well, you can certainly use precedent, precedents, precedent, excuse me, as, as a guide. I would say that the precedent has already been established in the Spring Hill community from Hillwood to other areas, or from McGregor to Bitten Spur area to University. There's, there's been plenty of these type situations where you have postage stamp lots created in front of big lots. There have been numerous in the last 20 years, so we're not setting a precedent here, even though there might not be one specifically in this immediate area of Ravine Woods, it's in the general community, general area, so we wouldn't be setting it, because I think it's already been started years ago.
And again, to your point earlier, grounds for denial, if there's not a safety issue and it meets the subdivision requirements with setbacks and lot sizes, it should pretty much be allowed, correct?
Correct, yeah, if, if it's, meets the, the minimum size as set forth in the subdivision regulations, and it doesn't create a safety issue, then there's not really anything we can do legally to deny it.
Okay, thank you.
Very arbitrary.
Correct.
Can, can I, can I speak to that real quick? This is Brett. It just, I, I just want to point out that early on, when I was speaking, in this same exact block in Ridgeline subdivision, on the western side of this block, five lots down, which sits at a corner, that lot has been subdivided previously, and it is actually a smaller lot than what we are submitting. It's smaller overall, and the, the smallest of that, that is adjacent to Old Shell Road, is only 65 feet wide. So, just want to kind of point out that, that I believe evidence here is, you can see on the screen, across the street, it's been subdivided, but you can't quite see that in this same block to the west, it has been, been done before on this same, same road, stretch of road.
I'm not doubting you, I'm just curious, the one you said in this block to the west, Margaret, point to the one he's talking about, if you know.
Yep, it's gonna be to the right of that, just on.
It's, it's the other end of the block. It was subdivided in 1995 to create the small lot, and then it was re-subdivided in 2016 to combine the small lot with the main portion to make one big lot again, which is where a new house has been built.
Okay, because I was looking at the city map on the computer, and it looked like it was one big lot where the house is being constructed, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, are there any other questions from commissioners? Ms. Pappas, you said no one was here to speak, but instead it was just the comments from Mr. Lot that were submitted?
That is correct.
All right, then we will move from the public hearing to the deliberation on this item. Is there a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. So, returning the control back to Mrs. Latham.
Thank you, Jennifer. We will move on now to number four, which is Sunset Acres on Highway 90 subdivision. It has been recommended for tentative approval. Ms. Pappas, are the proponents in the office, or have they indicated agreement in the office?
We have no one here to represent the application and no one here in opposition. We did, were, were comments to the commission from Shirley Sweat. She had some questions, staff followed up with her regarding the zoning of the property and how the property can be used.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the staff, by any of the members of the commission? Anybody have any questions? All right, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion. We'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, is there? Properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That application, that motion passes. Now move on to application number five, which is Alta Point Cellar subdivision. It's also a planned unit development. Both have been recommended, one, the subdivision recommended for tentative approval, and the PUD recommended for approval with findings of fact. I'm sorry about that.
Okay. I have admitted Larry Smith, and then I also admitted a phone number, Mr. Smith, is that you?
Yes, I ended up coming into the office with a other person that was admitted, so we're, we're both in here with the same number together here.
Okay. If you would, if you would give your name and address for the minutes, if you're both going to speak.
It, it'll just be me, my name's Larry Smith, address is 880 Holcombe Boulevard, Fairhope, Alabama, 36532.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Would you like to make any comments?
Yes, on the subdivision, we're fine with, with all the, all the stipulations under the recommendation for approval. I would, on the PUD, ask that if y'all could entertain on number three, the temporary modular clinic that is there will eventually go on the site where we're, in front of the site with this parking lot. Obviously, construction hasn't started yet, so an August 2021 removal date is not likely. And so the condition here was either to remove it by August 2021 or apply for a new PUD application. Since we're here discussing the PUD right now, that this temporary clinic is on, if we could go ahead and handle the extension now that, you know, I would appreciate it if not, we'd pretty much have to submit within the next month or two to have it approved by the August Planning Commission. So if we can go ahead and get an extension for that temporary clinic, that would be helpful.
What would be helpful is if you could go ahead, if we can hold this over, for you to submit the plan showing the, the temporary building. I mean, how long is temporary going to be? Is this parking lot going to be used for that temporary building?
No, the temporary building is already on the site. It was approved last year, and it's, it's, this, this parking lot is just helping with some of the additional parking that, you know, there, there's having parking issues, and so this parking lot is helping serve all the existing uses on the property, and then it's been oversized for the future building that's going to go in front of it. And they don't even have, I don't think there's even an architectural layout of the building yet, and architects are still doing, I forget what they call it, but basically where they start determining what all the needs are, and start trying to come up with the different uses that are going to go with, end up building one of them being the temporary clinic. But there was a parking issue that they needed to resolve, in the meantime, while they do all the programming, that's what they call it. So that, that's why we're here with the parking lot right now, and eventually there'll be a building that, once they're done with programming, that can start doing the actual design of what that exterior is going to look like, so that I can drop it on the site, but I don't have anything right now to add to the PUD.
Okay, well.
I don't know what the timeline for that is.
Okay. What we would like to see then is when you submit your final PUD, and we could revise condition number three to read illustration of the temporary modular building on the PUD site plan, because you don't have it illustrated on this.
All right. Any questions or comments from Mr. Smith by any commissioners? All right, thank you, Mr. Smith, for joining us. We're going to move into the deliber- deliberation phase now. I'll entertain a motion. Let's do, let's do it separately, let's take the subdivision first, and then take the PUD.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Okay.
Properly moved and seconded, are there, is there any discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion passes on the subdivision. Now let's check up the planned unit development.
We need to, we need to alter, you said number three, Margaret?
Yeah, yes, you cannot alter it to read illustration of the modular building on the PUD site plan.
Okay, I would move to approve subject to staff recommendations as amended by Margaret Pappas with findings of fact A, B, C, and E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Is there any opposition? All right, the motion on the planned unit development passes. Ms. Pappas, I believe you have some other business for us?
Okay. The planning commission may recall this application, which came up at your February 18th meeting. It was for some renovations at the Moss facility there at Moffett and Shelton Beach Road. One of the specific conditions was the dedication of a radius at the corner of Moffett and Schillinger. However, if you look, there is essentially an angle dedication that is already in place here. And Mary Beth Bergen with Traffic Engineering is in the meeting and can speak much more eloquently to the point, but in general, that angle satisfies the need for a radius. But since it was a specific condition on the letter of decision, I did want to bring it up to the commission that we are looking to accept the existing right-of-way here at the corner as it currently exists.
Margaret, do you need a motion or for something like that?
Yes, simply because we're looking to sign the plat, and it will not be exactly as referenced on the letter of decision, so I would like a commission action.
Do you have specific wording that you, how you would like that motion worded?
Basically, we would like for the commission to accept the dedicated right-of-way at the intersection of Moffett and Shelton Beach as it currently exists.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion on this item?
Just out of curiosity, I remember we spent a lot of time on this application when it came to us a few weeks back, and I think the main topic of conversation then was about the fencing sidewalk?
Sidewalk.
Yes, but that, that's all been resolved, and there's no issues there?
That is still being worked upon.
Okay, and it was more of a timing issue than it was anything else?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Having been moved and, properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Ms. Pappas, do you have another item?
Yes, I just wanted to give an update to the commission. Staff is still working through final edits for the commission's review regarding those things reviewed and discussed at the business meeting for the UDC. We're hoping to get that back for you on an agenda in April, so we will be following up with you as soon as possible, getting word out to our, to the public and our interested parties via our social media, mapformobile.org website, and our, our email list and so forth, and we will be working with communications on that as well. So it's coming up before y'all soon.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas.
Okay, that's all I have.
If there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.